Good afternoon. I'd like to call to order the Hamilton County Board of Commissioners' regular meeting of February the 11th. Good afternoon, Madam Commissioners.
Good afternoon.
We have quite a few things on our agenda. We're gonna move forward as we always do with silent prayer and pledge of allegiance. Thank you. I pledge allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America.
To the republic. To the republic.
Under God.
Which stands.
Indivisible with liberty and justice.
One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Can I have a motion to approve the minutes of the previous session?
So move. For a second?
Second.
Ms. Somar Dumas?
Yes.
Ms. Reese?
Yes.
Ms. Drehouse?
Yes.
Thank you. Well, this is an exciting time in Hamilton County. I'm just really excited about the heroes and the sheros that we are recognized today. In the process of doing that, I am going to read a proclamation from all of the commissioners recognizing Black History Month in Hamilton County. And I know that history will never right, reveal, expose all the impact that African-Americans have had, not only in the United States but in the world. The blood, sweat, and tears that have been shed for the greater good of all. And so, we've been designated one month, which is February, to make this happen. But as we know, every day, every month, every year, there's impact that is done. So because February has been designated, we are going to recognize it now. We have history right in front of us. Our Vice President Reese was elected to three legislative offices. Commissioner Drehouse was the first president, female president, of Hamilton County Board of Commissioners. And of course, I was the first African-American ever to be on the Hamilton County Board and the first African-American president. But this is not about us, it's about all those people that are waiting to receive their proclamation and to say a few words. So I'm gonna read just a little bit of our proclamation, which declares this month Black History Month. Proclamation recognizing February as Black History and African-American History Month in Hamilton County. Whereas, and I'm gonna just go down to the middle of it, whereas in 1926, Dr. Carter G. Woodson initiated the celebration of Negro History Week, which corresponded with the birthdays of Frederick Douglass and Abraham Lincoln. Whereas in 1976, it took 50 more years, this celebration was expanded to include the entire month of February. And today, Black History Month garners support throughout the country as people of all ethnic and social backgrounds discuss the black experience. Whereas this month is also a time for all Hamilton County residents to celebrate the heritage of our African-Americans which reside within this county and in the state of Ohio. Now therefore, be it proclaimed that for the third year in a row, the Hamilton County Board of Commissioners recognize February the 1st through February the 28th, 2021, as Black History and African-American History Month in all of Hamilton County. Be it further proclaimed that Reverend Damon Lynch Jr., Derrick Brazil, Curtis Fuller, Linda Childs Jeter, Jennifer Moore, and Bernadette Watson are being honored for their service to citizens of Hamilton County as part of our Black History Month recognition. And this was signed by all our commissioners. So moving forward, I'd like to get started. Our first recognition would be for Reverend Damon Lynch Jr. We'll let him show his face a little. Okay. Reverend Lynch, are you there?
Yes.
Okay. I saw your face earlier, but you don't. Okay. So I'm gonna read this proclamation. I am so honored to be providing this proclamation. And so, the whole commission I know are honored. And we chose you out of our office. Whereas the Hamilton County Commissioners recognize February as Black History Month, also known as African-American History Month. Whereas Reverend Lynch received his bachelor's license from Cincinnati Bible Seminary, his Master of Business Administration from the Graduate Theological Foundation, where he was voted Class A and received an honorary doctorate of humane letters. Whereas Reverend Lynch, former president of the Baptist Ministries Conference, has been an instructor in preaching, was the first president of the pastors' conference of Branson, Cincinnati. He is a founding member of the Board of Directors of the National Underground Railroad Freedom Center. He is a member of the Medical Review Board of the University of Cincinnati College of Medicine and many other boards. Whereas he is a former member of the Board of Directors of Housing Opportunities Made Equal at City Gospel Mission, a former commissioner of the Ohio Commission on Dispute Resolution and Conflict Management. And whereas Reverend Lynch, a strong soldier for equality and justice for all, started the first Martin Luther King March along with Virginia Coffey, Reverend Fred Schuttlesworth, and Charlene Ventura. And whereas Reverend Lynch Jr. has been a recipient to several other awards, somebody's echoing, including Great Living Cincinnati Award, Faith and Action Award, Emmy Award for Advocacy, Community Service Award, Right Over Street Award, Washington Times Foundation National Service Award, Joseph A. Hall Award, the first UC Health and College of Medicine Humanitarian Award, President's Lifetime Achievement Award, Proclaimer of the Year Award, and Citizen of the Year, and numerous others. Whereas Reverend Lynch Jr. was inducted into the Ohio Silver Rights Hall of Fame, the Martin Luther King Jr. Board of Preachers of Morehouse College was commissioned a Kentucky Colonel, a man of honor honoree. Now therefore, be it proclaimed, Hamilton County Board of Commissioners honors Reverend Damon Lynch Jr. for his contributions to the betterment of the citizens of Hamilton County. Be it further proclaimed that the Board of County Commissioners of Hamilton County, Ohio, does hereby proclaim the 13th day of February 2021 as Reverend Damon Lynch Jr. Day, and it is signed by all our commissioners. Would you like to say a few words?
Okay, well, thank you and God bless you. I am indeed humbled and grateful for this award. And I want to thank all of you. And I'm just so happy to see all of these women up front and leading in the county. I was around when the first woman was chosen, and we all jumped for joy when she got the award and started leading the commissioners. And I know a whole lot of you up close and personal. We worked together across the years, and I'm just thrilled and tickled to death to be honored with my good friend Curtis Fuller and all of the other honorees today and forever and forever. My wife and I will be happy to know that you chose me today because she's also my partner in crime. And for 51 years as the pastor of the New Jerusalem Baptist Church, and 61 years of marriage, full-time and uninterrupted, she's been a part of everything. So I share this award with her. God bless you and may God keep you. Thank you very much.
Yes, uh-huh. God bless you. We're thrilled also. Thank you so much. Okay, our next honoree is Curtis Fuller. Let's see. Curtis, are you there?
I'm here.
Okay, very good. And we know when you're here, we hear that voice for sure. I'd like to proclaim and recognize Curtis Fuller for his contributions in Hamilton County. And whereas Curtis Fuller is an Emmy Award-winning veteran broadcast journalist whose broadcasting career has spanned more than 40 years, with most of that spent as a news anchor in Cincinnati for the NBC affiliate WLWT TV. And whereas he was named one of the Cincinnati's Men of Honor and was once selected Cincinnati's Favorite TV Personality by the Broadcast Hall of Fame. He has received hundreds of awards for his excellence in journalism and his tireless community services. And whereas the many awards and recognitions include the YMCA Legend Award, the prestigious Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. Dreamkeeper Award, the National Academy of Arts and Sciences, and many other professional organizations. He is also one of the first journalists inducted into the Central Florida Association of Black Journalists and Broadcasters Hall of Fame. And whereas Curtis has consistently shown his leadership and commitment to the community, he issued the proposal to Cincinnati City Council that led to an inner-city street being renamed in honor of high school honor student Derrick Turnbull, who was shot and killed. He led the effort to have the city of Cincinnati and the Cincinnati Reds honor the 50th anniversary of Jackie Robinson's entrance into Major League Baseball. He also conceived and produced an eight-day Cincinnati Jazz Heritage Festival. And whereas he is a sought-after speaker and a host for dozens of events throughout Hamilton County, and he has helped raise millions of dollars for organizations by volunteering his time. Whereas Curtis is always looking for ways to serve his community and establish a scholarship in his name in 2010 to help young aspiring journalists achieve their dreams. Now therefore, be it proclaimed, Hamilton County Board of Commissioners honors Curtis Fuller for his contributions to the betterment of the citizens of Hamilton County. Be it further proclaimed that the Board of County Commissioners of Hamilton County also hereby proclaim the 12th day of February 2021 as Curtis Fuller Day in all of Hamilton County, and is signed by all of our commissioners.
Well, thank you very much. What a huge honor. I was so surprised when I got the note. It's very humbling. Because first of all, to be mentioned in the same sentence with Reverend Damon Lynch, my goodness, he's the godfather. And so, I'm honored to be on the same billing, if you will, with him and all the other honorees. You know, and to be honored by three of my friends, you're all my friends, but what a historic moment for all of you to be on the commission. So people always say, you know, when you get older, after 40 years, you sometimes think that all the things that you might have been involved in, things that you've done, they start to get devalued. But it's nice to know that people are thinking about you and know that there's still a lot of strength left in my voice and in my spirit. So I don't plan on going anywhere anytime soon. And the struggle continues.
Yes, absolutely.
God bless you, and much continued success for all of you. And thank you sincerely. Thank you very much.
And thank both of you so much. And use your days that you've been proclaimed wisely, okay? You have special, and let everybody know that you have a special day in Hamilton County.
All right, now when I go down to the bank and tell them it's my day, I hope I don't get arrested.
Okay, okay. So we're gonna move forward to some, also some other great honorees. So I'm gonna move forward to Vice President Alicia Reese.
Thank you. Thank you very much, Madam President. I am excited to add to our honorees two individuals that I'd like to recognize and our board is recognizing today. The first one is Councilwoman Linda Childs Jeter. See on there. There she is. All the way from the village of Lincoln Heights. It gives me honor to read this proclamation, whereas the Hamilton County Commissioners recognize February as Black History Month, also known as African-American History Month, and that this month be a time to better understand the contributions made by African-Americans in the United States of America. Whereas during the month of February, Hamilton County recognizes the contributions of African-American citizens to the culture, well-being, economy, and vibrancy of our community. And whereas our honoree, Linda Childs Jeter, was born and raised and currently lives and is a diehard person from the village of Lincoln Heights. She is a retired educator, foster parent, and business owner. She started working in her family grocery store at an early age. Councilwoman Jeter began her professional career by teaching at Quarter Tech, remember Quarter Tech? My alma mater, Withrow High School, and Norwood High School Adult Education. She is the mother of one daughter, Bridgette Stewart. And whereas she is a current council member for the village of Lincoln Heights. She's also the chair of the Safety Committee and serves on the Economic Development and Finance Committees. In addition, she is a member of the Healthcare Connection Board of Trustees and the Intercommunity Cable Regulatory Commission, Respect My Block, 2020 Census. She was an advocate and worked very hard to get people to turn their census back in. And she is also a proud member of Lincoln Heights Christian Academy Board. Whereas Councilwoman Jeter's focus is on being a voice for the community, educating our children, providing safety, and promoting economic development. She's an advocate for healthcare for the underserved, uninsured, and underinsured. Her community engagement includes recycling, voter education, and voter registration, where she personally makes sure everyone in Lincoln Heights is registered to vote. Whereas Councilwoman Jeter is a member of the Lincoln Heights Missionary Baptist Church. She's also a lifetime member of the Cincinnati Professional Photographers Association, Hamilton County Teachers Association, the Ohio Retired Teachers Association, and she's very proud as a lifetime member of her sorority, Alpha Kappa Alpha Sorority Incorporated. Now therefore, be it proclaimed that the Board of County Commissioners does hereby recognize and celebrate the contributions of Linda Childs Jeter, who has fostered an inclusive environment for growth and opportunity in our community. And let me say, she has educated hundreds and hundreds of people, including myself, who has come through her program. Be it further proclaimed that the Board of County Commissioners of Hamilton County, Ohio, do hereby proclaim Valentine's Day, February 14th, day of February 2021, as Linda Childs Jeter Day in Hamilton County. And this is signed by all of the members of the county commission.
Thank you, President Dumas, Commissioner Dumas, Vice President Commissioner Reese, and Commissioner Drehouse. Thank you for the opportunity to be among such giants here that I know. Reverend Damon Lynch is originally from Lincoln Heights, so he also loves this great community. I want to say, let us continue to walk in the shoes and work due to work of Martin Luther King, Rosa Parks, John Lewis, and of course, our great, great sister, Kamala Harris, Vice President of the United States. Let's not just celebrate Black History in February, but all year long. And as John Lewis would say, get into good trouble. Thank you for the invite today. I'm honored.
Congratulations. My next person for us to recognize today, very excited, is Ms. Bernadette Watson. Whereas Bernadette Watson, a native Cincinnian, has been in administration for 40-plus years. Her experience includes serving as the president of the Cincinnati Avondale Community Council, community liaison for former Vice Mayor Minette Cooper, and working as community and legislative liaison for Mayor Charlie Lukin. She would go on to become the first African-American woman Chief of Staff for a directly-elected mayor, Charlie Lukin, in the city of Cincinnati. Whereas since that time, Bernadette Watson has served two and a half years as the Public Information Officer for the Cincinnati Health Department's Office of Community Advocacy before retiring from the city of Cincinnati in 2007. Prior to her entrance into the political realm, she worked in the area of mental health for 15 years. She worked with adult and children psychiatrists until she left to go to work at City Hall for then-Vice Mayor Minette Cooper. Bernadette Watson served as a team leader for the U.S. Census Bureau, and she had several states, I might add, preparing for the 2010 Census Awareness Campaign. She was also a coordinator of statewide events such as the Ohio Legislative Black Caucus, 13th Annual 2011 Luncheon. One of the proudest moments in her long career in many areas of public service, Bernadette was the Southwest Ohio Regional Political Director for the 2012 Presidential Campaign for Organizing for America for the first African-American president, Barack Obama. Now she works as a mentor to help guide our youth to be the next leaders of the future. I also want to add that Bernadette Watson has been very, very active in connecting people in our community, and I want to thank her for that, and she has won several awards. Now therefore, be it proclaimed that the Board of County Commissioners does hereby recognize and celebrate the contributions of Bernadette Watson to foster an inclusive environment for growth and opportunity in our community. Be it further proclaimed that the Board of County Commissioners of Hamilton County, Ohio, does hereby proclaim February 15th, 2021, as Bernadette Watson Day in all of Hamilton County, Ohio. Congratulations.
Thank you. Thank you so, so very much. Thank you, Alicia. Always just humbling and honored to know that the work that I've done, it's just been many years. I see Denise Commissioner Drehouse sitting there, and for years when I worked with Minette, and we were neighbors across the hall from each other, you know, have known Commissioner Dumas for years and been around her and mutual friends and friendships that we've had over the years. And as everyone has said, to be sitting and being honored with Reverend Damon Lynch, and as my husband calls Curtis Fuller, our daddy, and honored. And Linda, it's always an honor just to be in your company for whatever reason, and the humbling of being able to do that and the work that we've been able to do together. Also, I just want to say how dishonored I am to be honored by these three women who are sitting on the commission. I have six granddaughters and one great-granddaughter. And for us to have a vice president, an African-American that looks like them, and to be a part of something that is going on so great, and then three women to be honoring their grandmother is another great honor, and they are always so proud and so anxious. Reverend Lynch talked about his partner in crime, and as you all know, I have one, and Lord knows, it's a good thing you don't see him on camera right now because you know he's somewhere lurking close. But I do want to say, my husband and I, Thomas, could not do the work that I do and the things that we do here at the house without him. Known him since I was 13 years old, we've been married this year for 55 years and the time that we've been together. So he's been not only my husband but a life partner for many years. And I always want to acknowledge him and my children and my family because I bring them into a fold that I have learned, and the public service that I've been able to share with not only the city of Cincinnati but the county. And this is my home. I've been in Avondale, like Linda's been in Lincoln Heights. Avondale is mine, and I claim it. And I love my city and to be able to work with you all and be a part of being able to do something for the county, I really appreciate it. Thank you all, and I'm humble.
Okay, we'll go forward to Commissioner Drehouse. You have two great people you'd like to honor also.
I do indeed. Thank you, Madam President. I appreciate the opportunity, and thanks again for having this, right? For kind of hosting this celebration of Black History Month and the individuals that reside among us that are champions in our community. So I'm gonna continue on the thread of ladies. So Jennifer Moore, there she is, is on the screen. I've known Jen for many years, primarily when we worked in Columbus together, but she now serves as a member of the Commission of Women and Girls. And she has been a true leader on that commission. And so, thank you, Jen, for joining today. I'm gonna read this resolution. Whereas Hamilton County Commissioners recognize February as Black History Month, also known as African-American History Month, and that this month be a time to better understand the contributions made by African-Americans to the United States of America. And whereas during the month of February, Hamilton County recognizes the contributions of Hamilton County African-American citizens to the culture, well-being, economy, and vibrancy of our community. And whereas, born in Cincinnati, Ohio, Jen Moore graduated with a bachelor's degree in communications in 2009 and master's in business administration in 2020. And whereas Jennifer Moore is an accomplished communications and public relations professional with more than nine years of expertise in developing and executing all aspects of public outreach campaigns to increase media exposure and support strategic marketing initiatives. And whereas Jennifer Moore has communications expertise in a wide range of industries, including state government, political affairs, transportation, travel, traffic safety, and nonprofit community affairs. And throughout her career, she has been successful in establishing and maintaining media relationships, managing multiple projects, and shifting priorities in a fast-paced, worked environment. And whereas Jen Moore has a deep love for the arts and has participated in a multitude of arts-focused programs and initiatives such as League of Cincinnati Theater Stage Insight Reviews Program, Cincinnati Arts Association Connectors Program, and is a 2017 graduate of Arts Waves Boardway Bound Program. And whereas Jen Moore is a member of the Cincinnati Chapter of the Links, Alpha Kappa Alpha Sorority, Greater Cincinnati Black Public Relations Professionals, Cincinnati Chapter of Public Relations Society of America, and the Hamilton Commission on Women and Girls, where she also serves as a task force member. Now therefore, be it proclaimed that the Board of County Commissioners of Hamilton County does hereby recognize and thank Jennifer Moore for her outstanding contributions of fostering an inclusive environment for growth and opportunity in our community. And be it further proclaimed that the Board does hereby proclaim the 17th day of February 2021 as Jennifer Moore Day in all of Hamilton County.
Good afternoon. Thank you, President Dumas, Vice President Reese, and of course, Commissioner Drehouse. I just humbly thank you for the honor. I was surprised as well when I got the phone call. You don't think when you're doing the work that you get recognized for, you just put your head down and do the work. And so, I've worked with many of you in a number of ways over the past few years, and I'm so happy to be back home in Cincinnati to now work in a different avenue with helping folks make sure that they get home safely. I am honored and humbled by the recognition. I have to thank my family. If I don't, they will let me know. And so, I want to thank my family because without them, I'm nothing. They are my support system with any and everything that I do. I am honored to be recognized with such giants in the community. I get my inspiration from you all, and I just hope and pray that I can continue to keep doing good work, excellent work, I would say, until the end of my day. So thank you. I truly, truly appreciate it.
Thank you, Jen. All right. And I guess lastly, we've got Derrick Brazil with us. Good afternoon, Derrick. I think many of you know him, so let me go ahead and get started with his resolution. Whereas the Hamilton County Commissioners recognize Black History Month, also known as African-American History Month, and that this month be a time to better understand the contributions made by African-Americans to the United States of America. And whereas during the month of February, Hamilton County recognizes the contributions of African-American citizens to the culture, well-being, economy, and vibrancy of our community. And whereas, born in Cleveland, Ohio, not holding that against him, and a 2009 graduate of Whittenburg University, Derrick Brazil drew Derek Brazil drew inspiration from Booker T. Washington, Marcus Garvey, and others, who spoke of how entrepreneurship and business development could uplift and liberate black descendants of slaves. And whereas Derek Brazil, along with co-founders William Thomas and Alan Woods, started MORTER in 2014 to help black and brown entrepreneurs start and grow businesses in their communities, leveraging the power of entrepreneurship to create opportunities and build an inclusive model for neighborhood redevelopment and economic growth. And whereas in 2020, Derek Brazil worked with the African American Chamber of Commerce, the Cincinnati Micro Enterprise Institute, to launch the PUSH Grant Program, which helped minority-owned businesses weather the impacts of the COVID-19 crisis. And whereas Derek Brazil served as the Vice Chair of the United Way of Greater Cincinnati's 2020 to 2021 Campaign, which raised over $50 million during the pandemic to support the United Way's effort to fight for health, education, and financial stability of every person in our community. And whereas, after helping over 300 businesses through his work at MORTER, Derek Brazil has decided to take his own advice and left MORTER to start his own business. As co-owner of, I hope I'm saying it right, Derek, Pato Rojoc Tacos, Derek is drawing on his frequent travels and passion for the street food of Mexico City to share his delicious tacos to the Cincinnati and the Hamilton County region. Now therefore be it proclaimed that the Board of County Commissioners does hereby recognize and celebrate the contributions of Derek Brazil to offer an inclusive environment for growth and opportunity in our community. And be it further proclaimed that the Commission does hereby proclaim the 16th Day of February 2021 as Derek Brazil Day in all of Hamilton County. Yay, Derek.
Well, thank you all for this incredible honor today. I am incredibly humbled and grateful for this acknowledgement alongside so many incredible leaders that have looked up to you for so long. I am truly standing on the shoulders of giants. I would like to thank Commissioner Dreehouse for this honor and for your guidance and leadership over the years. Your friendship has meant the world to me. Thank you. I would like to thank my family for their support and for their example. You all have encouraged me and supported me over the years, and I'm so grateful for that. To my brothers-in-arms, William Thomas and Alan Woods, thank you for joining me in this struggle to make our community more like the Reverend Dr. Martin Luther King's version and vision of a beloved community. And finally, to my favorite city in the world, Cincinnati. You have welcomed me and given me every opportunity to contribute in making the city a better place. Thank you so much for this honor, and onward.
Thank you all. Don't go anywhere, because we have to get a picture of everyone. Let's congratulate all of them again, please. Very good. Bridgette, is there anyone that may be on to make comments as relates to our recognitions and our honorees?
Good question, Commissioner. Currently, I do not see any hand raised on the attendees' side, but I'll give them just a second.
Okay.
And it looks like we do not have comment at this time.
Okay, very good. Did you get everything you needed on the screen, Bridgette?
Thank you, I did.
Okay, very good. Well, thank you all. Go forth and conquer like you've been doing. So thank you all for, and it's really unusual, this is our third year. As I was saying, we had all men the first year, all women the second year, and then we just had a mix this year. So it just happened that way. So looking forward to the things that you're going to do in the community. So thank you all so much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Derek, don't forget to tell us where you got that sweatshirt.
There you go. Okay, we'll move forward then to comments and motions of our commissioners. Vice President Reese, do you have any comments or motions?
Madam President, I don't have any comments right now. Let's focus on the Black History Celebration, so.
Commissioner Dreehouse, do you have any comments or motions?
I do. In fact, I think it's apropos, actually, given what we just did celebrating Black History Month. There is, and all of us have spoken to this, the need for equity when it comes to the vaccine distribution in Hamilton County and in the city of Cincinnati. And so Greg Kesterman and his team have put together a plan to address the issue of equity as we continue to receive doses, especially as we continue to receive more doses, and how we are going to continue to be intentional about the distribution related to equity in Hamilton County. So I thought it might be helpful to have him come on to, Commissioner Dumas or President Dumas, I know that you've got him coming on periodically, and I'm wondering if we could have him speak to this issue the next time he comes to a staff meeting.
Sure, that would be great. More of the best, yeah.
Yeah, and I think he's, I don't, he's finishing it out, and I will make sure everybody receives a copy of that. But I think it's something that we're all very impassioned about, and so I want to make sure that there's opportunity for input with Greg and just an understanding of how the county is intending to move forward as we continue to try to vaccinate people throughout Hamilton County. So that's all I've got today. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. And I have no comments or motions today. We're a little bit behind on our public hearing, but that's okay. We had some great things to do. So I'm going to move right into our hearing to consider the 2021 Sidewalk Repair Replacement Program. Jeff, are you going to open that up, or is?
For the sidewalk replacement, I'm going to defer to County Engineer Eric Beck, Madam President.
Thank you. This is the second of two hearings that are required for the, to allow for assessment of the sidewalk improvement projects. We met three weeks ago or so with the commission, had the first hearing. This will be the second hearing that will allow us to move forward with that program. I know there was some questions last time regarding when this would actually affect the property owners, when the payment would get there. The pro contract will not close out till late this year. We'll bring the assessment back to the board with the amount early next year. We'll probably not go on to the property tax filings until October of 2022 with the first payment due in early 2023. And typically, the payment amounts, if they're $300 or less, they're split over three years, so $500 is over five years, and over 500 is over a 10-year assessment. So it's basically a $100 assessment per year for those that are required. Glad to answer any questions. I don't know if we have anybody here to speak on it or not.
Yeah, I was gonna, that was gonna be my next question. Do you see anyone on there, Bridgette, to speak to this hearing?
I do not, Commissioner.
Okay, thank you so much. I'll open it up to Vice President Reese, if you have any questions or comments.
Yeah, actually I do. So Eric, I just want to make sure, I know last time, and this is very helpful, because last time that was one of the concerns about, you know, making sure that, you know, these payments wouldn't be on people right away, because we don't know how long the COVID is going to be affecting them. And I think originally we thought it would be July of this year, but now you have.
The construction will be completed July of this year.
Okay.
The project, yeah, the billing is probably not going to happen. We will bring that back to the board probably in January of next year, once the project's been finalized out.
Yeah, so that's a great clarification.
Yes.
So that helped me out a lot. Thank you very much.
Sure.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Dreehouse.
No questions. Thanks, Eric.
With no questions, and so Eric, when do you plan on bringing a resolution forward?
We'll get that back down to the board as soon as possible, yes.
Okay. All right, with no other comments or questions, I'm going to make a motion to close the hearing.
Second.
Ms. Summer Dumas?
Yes.
Ms. Reese?
Yes.
Ms. Dreehouse?
Yes.
Madam President, if I could, before Eric drops off,
Yes.
I just want to clarify, I know we have item number two on the regular agenda today, which is concluding the hearing and determining to proceed with a contract. So Eric, I don't know if that is, in fact, the resolution, or if there is an additional resolution, but just didn't thought that if it was the resolution coinciding with this particular hearing, the board may want to take it up now as opposed to waiting. But it's obviously your.
This resolution, the resolution that is item two there is the resolution just to close the public hearing. And then we will bring the actual contract back to the board at another hearing.
Okay, thank you. So do I need, Jackie, do I need to, well, we'll vote on that again as we move through the regular agenda item, just include it. Okay, so we have another hearing to consider a decrease in the real property transfer tax.
Thank you, Madam President. I know that Assistant Administrator Brugan is on, but just to summarize, we had a hearing last week as well. This is a hearing to roll back from four to three mils, the property transfer fee that is placed on the sale and the transfer of property in Hamilton, in Hamilton County, that currently is four mils per $1,000 of sale value. We would be rolling that back to three. The history here is that, as was stated last week, the Board of County Commissioners, I believe it was in 2019, voted to put this fee, to increase the fee from three to four mils, given the tumultuous budget times that the county was going through at that time. There was an initiative moving forward at that point in time to consolidate the Union Terminal Sales Tax when it would roll off into the County General Fund. But before that could be done, there was still some budgetary issues that the county was facing. So the concept was to raise the transfer fee by a mil, which would produce roughly $4 million to assist with the county's budget issues at the time, with the idea that that would be rolled back again to three mils once the sales tax became permanently a part of the county's revenue sources. So that has now happened. This is the first year that where that quarter cent is fully integrated into the county's general fund revenue stream. And so this resolution, or this hearing is, corresponds with Resolution Number Six on the Consent Agenda today, which would roll back the property transfer fee, which would, I believe, the first full date of that would be March 13 of 2021. So with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions or defer to Assistant Administrator Brugan if there are any additional questions.
Thank you, Jeff. Are there any additional questions, Vice President Reese?
Yeah, I just wanted to, I certainly think this is a good, a good step and a good way to go. I just wanted to just add that, I know we reached out to the Board of Realtors who really were kind of driving this issue as well. But I just want to let Jeff know. We also reached out to the Realtors, which is African American real estate brokers, and wanted to let them know and be notified. And upon, you know, what, if we decide to pass this, which I think we're heading in that direction, just want to make sure that they will receive a copy of the resolution so that they can share with their members as well, because this also affects them as well.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Dreehouse.
Yeah, thank you. Yes, as I stated last week, I'm supportive of this. We, you know, we were in a tough time a few years ago with our budget, and we're really struggling. And so we, in partnership with Realtors and others in the industry, raised the fee, knowing that if we could stabilize our budget through the .25 increase, that we would be able to roll this back. And so we, you know, made a commitment at that time. We are now honoring that commitment, so I'm supportive of this and thank them for really their partnership and all this. It wasn't easy for them to recognize the need of the county as a whole and kind of play their part in helping us get through that time. So I'm grateful for that and am happy to support the resolution this afternoon.
Thank you. And I am also supportive of this resolution that will be coming forward, item number six, and that anything we can do to reduce the cost to our residents, that's what we want to do. So not hearing anything else related to the hearing, I'd like to make a motion.
Madam President?
Yes.
I think we have Mark Quarry, I think, would like to make some comments. Do you see that on your chat screen?
No, I didn't see it. Okay, thank you, Mark. Come on, come forward. Thank you.
Bridgette, do you know if Mark is unmuted on his side?
There we go.
There we go.
Thanks.
My screen froze for a moment. I apologize.
That's okay.
President Dumas, Vice President Reese, and Commissioner Dreehouse, thank you very much for the opportunity to speak with you. And thank you in advance for your all support in this reduction of a transfer tax. You know, I was watching last week when John Brugan commented that, hey, it's not always that he gets to talk about a decrease in taxes. And yes, that's something that unfortunately doesn't happen very often. But gosh, thank you. On behalf of the Cincinnati Area Board Realtors and our over 5,000 members and the many property owners here in Hamilton County, we thank you for taking this step. Thank you for your explanation, Jeff, and especially also Denise, sorry, Commissioner Dreehouse. You know, you were on the commission when you all had to make this move. And we were disappointed, but we, at the same time, we did understand, given the budget pressures that the county was facing due to the managed care tax and everything else. But we really thank all three of you for following through on this commitment. As you say, Commissioner Dreehouse, and kind of a promise made and promise kept, and you all three are doing that today. We applaud you for it, and we thank you very much for it.
Thank you, Mark, and thank you for all that you do.
Madam President, I just wanted to give an opportunity for anybody else. We do have quite a few attendees. If anybody else would like to comment, if they could raise their hand, we'll unmute them. And it doesn't appear that we have any other comment. Thank you.
Thank you, Bridgette. I'd like to make a motion to close a hearing to consider this decrease in the real property transfer tax.
Second.
Ms. Summer Dumas?
Yes.
Ms. Reese?
Yes.
Ms. Dreehouse?
Yes.
Thank you. And we will officially pass that when we go to our consent items. So we'll move forward with our regular agenda items. We have our engineer Eric Beck is there to explain item number one.
Thank you, Commissioner. First, I would like to thank the employees of the County Engineers' Office who've spent a lot of time this week removing snow and ice from our roads. I think they should be applauded for the hard work they put in. They put in a lot of hours and a lot of work to keep us traveling safe, and I appreciate the work they do. Item number one is a First Amendment to a contract with MVM, who replaced a fuel tank at one of our maintenance locations. During that relocation, there was some contaminated soil discovered, and this is an additional cost to, that was, that was for removing and hauling that contaminated soil to an approved site. Item number two is the hearing, closing the hearing that we previously did. And item three is a resolution to extend a purchase contract with Capital Electric Line Builders. They do our traffic signal maintenance on an emergency call-out option, so that gives us an extension there through this calendar year to use them for emergency response on traffic signal repairs. Glad to answer any questions you might have.
Thank you, Eric. Are there any questions, Vice President Reese?
No questions on these items.
Commissioner Dreehouse?
No questions.
Okay, and I don't have any questions either. And please let them know, the staff know, that we certainly appreciate what they've done, and I'm sure that the citizens do also.
Thank you.
You're welcome. So item number one, as Eric indicated, it would be $108,963 that we're using toward that disposal, fuel tank removal and installation. So I'd like to make a motion to adopt. to make a motion to adopt item number one.
Second. Commissioner Summer Dumas?
Yes.
Commissioner Reese?
Yes.
Commissioner Dreehouse?
Yes.
Thank you. And item number two, as we said earlier, was the closure of the public hearing, so I make a motion to adopt item two.
Second. Commissioner Summer Dumas?
Yes.
Commissioner Reese?
Yes.
Commissioner Dreehouse?
Yes.
Thank you. And item number three, the resolution authorizing an amendment to a purchase contract with Capital Electric Line Builders Incorporated for Traffic Signal Maintenance ITB Number 062-19. I'd like to make a motion.
Second. Commissioner Summer Dumas?
Yes.
Commissioner Reese?
Yes.
Commissioner Dreehouse?
Yes.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. And we will move forward. We have some consent agenda items. And what I'd like to do is to take item number five out and to make a motion to adopt items. And when I say take number five out, we'll have discussion on number five. But if we could, item number one through four, and item six through 27, I'd like to make a motion to adopt those consent agenda items.
Commissioner, real quick, I think you want to do a motion to approve number four, and then number six through 27. You indicated one through four, so you already voted on one.
I sure did. Thank you, Michael. So item four and item six through 27.
Is there a second?
Second.
Commissioner Summer Dumas?
Yes.
Commissioner Reese?
Yes.
Commissioner Dreehouse?
Yes.
Thank you.
Madam President?
Yes.
On those items, I just wanted people to, that may be watching, to know, those items we had discussed in previous meetings, those are contracts, many of them were contracts dealing with JFS, that we had had our Tuesday meetings on, from placement of students, and also dealing with the emergency declaration that our administrator had already notified us on, that allows us to get in position to get more money or be reimbursed. So I just wanted people to know that we had discussed these items.
And that's a great point, because some people who are probably listening, like, they went through all the way up to 27 and passed it. So that's a great point to make for the public that are listening, that we do discuss those things earlier. You can look on the website if you want more information. And so questions have been answered for each commissioner. So thank you for that comment. I'd like to go to item five. It's also a resolution, and I'd like to open up the discussion on item five. Vice President Reese?
Yes, so item five, and I don't know if you want Jeff to highlight it, but item five, I had some issues with. It's a, it's a bonding issue, and I have my understanding that it will be bonding of some of the parking garages. But the issue that I have is that the bonding can't be separated, is what I was told by Jeff, our administrator. So it has to be a package deal. My concern is in this package, the Hilltop, money to pay Hilltop to move is in this package. And so I am not comfortable voting on any money for Hilltop, especially until I get something saying that they have committed and have found a relocation in Hamilton County. I know they're looking at possibly Hamilton County, but they also are looking at possibly across the river. I also know that they moved their headquarters across the river. That's a loss in tax revenue and jobs for our side of the river. So I am uncomfortable to move forward with this item number five, that includes Hilltop, until I at least see a commitment to a location, a signed contract, that they'll be in Hamilton County, where we will keep the jobs, we'll keep the tax, the tax rate income. So I just was not ready to vote on that. And for that reason, I'll have to vote no on item number five.
Okay, and let me, let me explain, those that are listening, what item five says. And it reads, Resolution Number One, authorizing the issuance and the sale of parking facilities, limited tax general obligation bonds of Hamilton County, Ohio, in principal amount not to exceed 38 million, to be issued in one or more series of bonds. So that's what we're talking about, for those of you who are listening. So Jeff, did you have, oh, let me go to Commissioner Dreehouse, and then we'll see what, if Jeff has something he would like to say.
Well, no, I'm happy to go to Jeff first, and I'll comment after Jeff goes.
Okay.
Yeah, Madam President, not a whole lot to say about it, other than I think your framing of the issue, and Commissioner Vice President Reese framed the issue well, that this is a bond issuance of up to 38 million, really for three issues. There is the reimbursement for the West End Garage Project, the public infrastructure for banks, Phase 3B, as well as for the acquisition of the second two parcels of the Hilltop property west of Paul Brown Stadium. And as the commissioner indicated, yes, we typically like to do these issuances in order to be as efficient as possible in one series of the bond, the issuance that we'll be doing will be up to 38 million. So it includes all those different components, which is why they're all packaged into the same, into the same resolution. So happy to answer any additional questions. John is also on, as is our bond counsel, Brad Rui, if there are any additional questions on the item, Madam President.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Dreehouse or Brad have anything he wanted to add, from what Jeff has said? Brad Rui? Brad?
John is on. John, I don't know if Brad is on our side of the, our side of the line or not. He may be on the other, the other side. So, John, any additional, any additional item or matters to add on this?
No, I think, and Brad is on our side. So if he has something, I'm sure he'll speak up.
Okay, sure. Okay, thank you. Commissioner Dreehouse?
Yeah, I just wanted to note that the bonding for the property, the Hilltop property that we're referring to, that is not coming, well, I should say it is coming out of the sales tax fund that is related to the stadiums. Remember that we have an obligation through a contract that was signed many, many years ago with the Bengals and a previous county commission to have a certain number of parking spots available for game day activities, for tailgating for their fans. And so we need to live up to an obligation that none of us signed on, off on. However, it is what it is. And so we are planning to develop the property near the stadium, which is currently serving for parking spots, and have that relocated to these Hilltop properties. So we negotiated with the Bengals, it's, I don't remember how long ago, it's been a year or two, perhaps, to not pay these game day payments to them that we owe on an annual basis, and rather redirect those dollars to the stadium fund to pay for this property. And so I just want to be clear that that is the transfer that's happening here, or at least that's part of what's going on here, and that these are dollars that are part of the stadium fund and not related to any other funds of the county.
Okay, thank you. I'm also in agreement that we need to meet our obligation, no matter if we were involved in it initially, but we have an obligation and reimbursements are necessary to move forward. So I am comfortable with bringing this item five.
Madam President, can I have another question? So I want to make sure I got good clarification from Jeff and maybe John. So my question is not about the obligation. My question is, when we're making the domino effect, where we purchased Hilltop, my understanding. So Hilltop had to move, and that was not part of the original deal. None of us was here with the original deal. So Hilltop now has to move, it has jobs, that pays income tax, property tax, and they have to go somewhere. And what I'm trying to do is make sure that we don't move them or pay them, make a payment to them, and they are able to take that payment for the property that we get. And they go to Kentucky, or somewhere outside of Ohio, outside of Hamilton County, because that's all we care about, outside of Hamilton County, and put now a company with jobs and tax base and property taxes. So I think it can be a win, possibly a win-win, where the obligation to the Bengals is met, but at the same time, we're not losing jobs. And I was just concerned that they move their headquarters to Kentucky, and that's a tax base and jobs. So I had asked Jeff, and maybe you could comment on that, they're looking at two locations, and he said they want to stay. But again, if there's no contract, I don't know if they are going to stay. So I just didn't want to move forward with something. The other ones that are in this bond, if we could separate the bond, they told me we couldn't. I have no problem moving forward with, but this one, I think we need to, you know, if it was me, I would have had a contract. We will buy your property if you commit to staying in Hamilton County. So that didn't happen. And so we got to vote today, I guess, and I'm just uncomfortable voting, not knowing that they are, they are going to actually stay in Hamilton County. Now, they may down the road, but the vote is today. So that, I just wanted to let people know, that's what I'm uncomfortable about, as we're moving forward. And the bond is scheduled to pay them another payment for the property that we have bought from them, which made them have to move. And they are looking, but I'm, Jeff, correct me if I'm wrong, have they signed a contract with the property in Hamilton County today?
I would have, Commissioner, I would have to see where they are with their, with the, with the individual locations that they are looking at. I don't have the specific answer to that. I will say that the, our closure on, on the second two parcels is scheduled to occur sometime in, later on, certainly sometime later on this year. I think we're looking to go to market for the bond issuance for all of these issues sometime in March, I think, John, is that correct? So at least to get a rating, at least to get a rating in March, and to go to market sometime shortly after that. So that's, that's the reason for the timing on this. But I would have to, I would have to touch base with Hilltop representatives specifically to get a more detailed summary of where they are with their, with their property search.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you. With no other questions or comments, I am comfortable with making a motion to adopt item five.
Second.
Commissioner Summer Dumas?
Yes.
Commissioner Reese?
No.
Commissioner Dreehouse?
Yes.
Thank you. Okay, finally, we do have a executive session.
Madam President?
Yes.
I apologize. I think we have one by leave.
Yes.
That was added this week. So this is, it's just a petition for the annexation of, it's listed as by leave one on your agenda. It's a petition for the annexation of 4.0516 acres from Sims Township to the city of Loveland. So when we get these, typically, the board action will be to receive it for the record, and we then refer it to the county engineer again. So just to the public who's watching, the board's role in these initially is to refer to the county engineer. The county engineer will then do the work to make sure that the, that the annexation that came in is, that the surveying is done properly, that the lines of the newly annexed areas are correct, that the plat, that the plat was done correctly, that the legal description is correct, that all of the individuals signing the petition, that that is, that is all correct. And depending upon the type of the annexation, sometimes to make sure that there are going to be appropriate services provided in the newly annexed area, et cetera, then the engineer will report back to the Board of County Commissioners prior to the approval of the, of the annexation. So that's a little bit of background on it. The administration recommends the approve, or the acceptance for the record and having the clerk refer to the county engineer.
Thank you, Jeff. And so by leave one is petition for the annexation of 4.0516 acres from Sims Township to the city of Loveland. I'd like to make a motion to present it for the record.
Second. Commissioner Summer Dumas?
Yes.
Commissioner Reese?
Yes.
Commissioner Dreehouse?
Yes.
Thank you. Okay, we do have an executive session. The executive session is pursuant to RC Section 121.22G1 to consider the appointment, employment, dismissal, discipline, promotion, demotion, or compensation of a public employee or official. I make a motion to go to executive session.
Second. Commissioner Summer Dumas?
Yes.
Commissioner Reese?
Yes.
Commissioner Dreehouse?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.